My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Alaska, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will proceed to roll call, please. Susan, you're blurry.
Here.
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 Here. All right. Thank you. And if you are listening, if you're in the audience or listening to our city council meeting over one of our optional viewing, viewing options, I should say, welcome. Our next item on the agenda is consent calendar. However, before we get started this evening, I wanted to talk a little bit about a tragedy that occurred in our community since our last meeting. I think everybody in our community is, has heard about the death of 11-year-old Jose Gutierrez, who was killed walking home after school by a driver under the influence who veered off the road on El Camino Real and hit Jose on the sidewalk. Our thoughts are first and foremost with Jose's family, who must now deal with grief and loss that most of us can only imagine. I also want to express our gratitude to our first responders and citizens who were first on the scene and our sympathy and understanding for them as they deal with that horrific scene and what they saw. We are extremely thankful to, for the efficiency of our police department, for not only identifying a suspect, but gathering evidence professionally and quickly to enable an arrest and charging of that suspect. We also want to thank the community for the immediate outpouring of compassion, love, and assistance for the family and the support of our staff. It is a true reflection of the generosity and the spirit that makes Tascadero a special place, and I would like for us to have a moment of silence in memory of Jose. Thank you. And I think we will also have further comment or discussion on this at our April 8th meeting. Okay, we are going to proceed now to our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial by city staff and will be acted upon by a single action of the council unless otherwise requested by an individual council member for separate consideration. I will now open the consent calendar to any public comment by any member of the audience.
Good evening, Council Jeff Osland. I have one quick question on the consent calendar, which goes to item number two. I would assume that the majority of these bills have already been paid, so why are we approving them after the fact rather than re? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I did want to just pull item A3 for a comment or clarification from staff. And with that, though, I would entertain a motion for items one, two, and four.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? We have a motion and a motion by Councilmember Newsom, a second by Councilmember Funk. Please call the roll.
All right, Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deres?
Yes.
Mayor Borbo?
Yes. Yes, I just wanted to clarify that on item A3, which consists of us approving purchase of some, an installation of some audiovisual equipment here mostly for the chambers, but also for certain conference rooms, that while there is a cost to this now, that there will be savings because as a result of this, the installation of this stuff, we will no longer have to pay for the videotaping and broadcast of our council meetings. Is that correct? I'm looking at Luke.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that's annual savings would be approximately, do you know?
I don't have the exact number at the top of my head.
But it's a
I want to say it's somewhere between 38 and 50,000 annually.
Got it. So in basically seven to 10 years, this would move would pay for itself. So, okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. And with that, if there's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Funk.
I did have one quick question on that item also. If staff could note, there was sort of a test that staff ran to see in terms of community, but this will result in our not having the services broadcast on Channel 20, which is a public access cable TV channel that's available to a shrinking number of persons within the city. Could you explain the test that was, was run?
Sure. So the past several council meetings, we have not been pushing the council meeting broadcast over to Channel 20, just to see what our viewership is, what information we've been hearing from those who might be using Channel 20 to watch, and we have not heard from anyone that they haven't been able to access it, that there's been issues with access or any of that. So for the past several council meetings where it has not been broadcast, we have not received any comment from the public about access.
Okay, and anybody who wanted to access it in that way could, could continue to access it through YouTube, through the Zoom that's published on the city's website, or listen to it live on KPRL, or subsequently see the archives that in the, on the city's website. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. And as we move forward with this, it will still continue to be published on our YouTube. We will be moving forward with a agenda management software program that will also have a recording of it that will be accessible through our website. And then also, someone can always reach out to the city and we're able to provide them a link to viewing the council meeting after.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, or Mayor Protem Deres, you have a question?
Thank you. Yes, Luke, a quick question. If I remember reading what I read in here correctly, the AV equipment that's being pulled out, it was what was put in when the building was redone after the earthquake. All new stuff, all state-of-the-art stuff. What is the approximate lifespan of what we're putting in now? Just out of curiosity, because this was about 11, 12 years for this current equipment.
Yeah, we're aiming for about 10-year lifespan on this equipment. The equipment that we have in here now lasted about 10 years and then started, little pieces started failing. So we're aiming for 10 years for the new equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, with that, and by the way, I'm glad Councilmember Funk asked that question. It illustrates how many different options people have, which is also great in case one of your viewing options is down, you can switch to the other ones. So there's many ways to watch your, your council in action. Okay, with that, we'll take a motion on item A3.
I'll move approval. Item A3?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Funk and a second by Councilmember Peak. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deres?
Yes.
Mayor Borbo?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Before we leave the consent agenda, I wanted to, our consent calendar, address the question raised by Mr. Osland in the audience as to why we are approving accounts payable items after the fact. Well, I think as a, as a vendor, Mr. Osland could certainly appreciate that we, he would not want to wait for council meetings before the city processed payments. And this, but this ensures that both the public gets to see these items on an agenda, a published agenda with every single payment the city makes as a public item. And of course, it means the council has a chance to review them and provide some oversight and, and ask questions, which some of us do ask questions and go over those items and ask what they're about. So, but it's much better practice to do it after the fact because it would be very bad business if we waited for council approval to process routine payments. Okay, thank you. And we will move on to updates from the city manager, and I will note that this evening, that will, that report will be given by our deputy city manager and city clerk, Laura Christensen, because Mr. Lewis, who is, who is of course rarely going to miss a city council meeting, is off. They had to drive today because tomorrow morning, he, our zoo director and Director Banish are going to be presenting our case before the AZA for accreditation of our zoo. And so that's a very important meeting for them to be at, and they will let us know later tomorrow how that turned out. But we are very hopeful because of all the great work that's been occurring at the zoo. But that is why Mr. Lewis is not here. So we will turn it over to Laura Christensen for the city manager update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, here we go. Just a quick update on the ECR project construction update, since we like to do those when we're here and give everybody an update of what we're looking at. On El Camino between Colony Cinemas and Huckleberries and sort of Trafficway, there'll be installation, continued installation of pavers, landscaping, and the hanging pendant lighting. You've probably seen the large poles that have gone up and they're going to start putting up that hanging lighting. So more of the final aesthetic is all coming together. So people will really get a better idea of what this project's going to look like. In the median between the K rails on ECR between Trafficway and Rosario, the continued work on the curb work, the planters, the trenching, everything that we saw between Trafficway and 41 is now the same work that's occurring Trafficway and Rosario. The boring continues along that section too, for all the new electrical. Again, it's still going to be some of those narrow travel lanes and traffic delays as they're moving equipment or getting stuff in to continue to move this project along. As always, access to businesses and driveways remain open. If anything changes, we bring that up. It's immediately noticed to the businesses, communication well in advance, and it's also always published on our website. So you can always find that. And anyone who ever has any information or wants more information on the project, again, at tascadero.org/ECRproject, or you can email ecrproject@tascadero.org. Weekend highlight, you probably remember we talked about it at our last meeting, was the Central Coast Craft Beer Fest. It was another huge success, a huge, huge success this year, topped the total amount in attendance year over year. This time there was over 2,500 attendees. And with that, there were 86 total breweries and food merchant vendors onsite. So it was a, another phenomenal success. And I know that we had some staff members attend who said it was the best year yet. So we continue to look forward to that one every year. The Drive Workshop, just another reminder that the Drive Strategic Planning and Teamwork Workshop is this weekend. Tickets are still available for anyone that's interested. It'll be this Saturday from 8:30 to 1:00 PM. Drive, the purpose of this is to provide business leaders with the tools and insights needed to navigate change and succeed in business. It's a half-day event designed to empower owners, executives, and emerging leaders with cutting-edge strategies and actionable steps. Information is available through Visit Atascadero and by visiting www dot fullcupsolutions dot com. Again, if you're interested, please make sure you get your tickets before the event. Party for the Planet was upcoming on Saturday, April 19th. That'll be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the zoo. General admission into the zoo will get you into the event. It's an Earth Day celebration filled with conservation learning and fun throughout the zoo. You can experience interactive adventures, hands-on activities, exhibits by sustainability-conscious businesses, and a variety of educational demonstrations. For more information, visit at tascadero dot com forward slash events, or you can get to the zoo's website through the city of Atascadero. And then finally, another reminder that the Waste Drop Off and Paper Shredding Week is coming up. This is one of two annual events hosted by Waste Management, the city's waste hauler. That is April 19th through 26th. So please make sure you mark your calendars. As a reminder, it's a new location this year. There's no voucher needed, so you won't need to go to the waste management offices to get a voucher. Instead, you can go directly to their, to the transfer station located at 3360 La Cruz Way off of Ramada Drive over. That's, for those unfamiliar, it's over by Tin City. All you need to do is bring your picture ID and a copy of your waste management bill in order to participate. For more information, please visit home dot WM dot com forward slash Atascadero. That'll give you all the information on what is and is not accepted at the Waste Drop Off. Again, just as a reminder, it's the week of April 19th through 26th, and no voucher needed this year. So this time you just get to show up, bring your ID and a copy of your waste management bill. And then I'm open to, if anyone has any questions. And as always, more information on city and city-sponsored events and information on the zoo can always be found at visit at tascadero dot com or by visiting the city's website at atascadero dot org. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have questions for the deputy city manager? Councilmember Newsom?
On the paper shredding event, are they going to be shredding the paper directly as you wait? Or can people also bring their own shredding as a drop off? Because I know right now it's not taken as a recyclable.
You could bring it as part of the Waste Drop Off.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I wanted to ask, just so I was clear on the slides you showed, the event at the Pavilion for Businesses, I thought you said it was this weekend, but it's, the date indicates it's tomorrow.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes, tomorrow. I apologize. March 26th.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions, then we will proceed on to Community Forum. Community Forum is reserved for persons wanting to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing matters not on the agenda. The council at its discretion may ask staff to contact a speaker regarding an issue raised or ask staff a quick question. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we ask that you state your name for the record. Okay, our first speaker.
Good evening. My name is Clyde Snyder. I'm a resident of Paloma Creek area. In fact, I live right next door to the Danish Care Home, which is the scene of the tragic event. And that's why I'm here. I sent out an email yesterday. I didn't quite send it to the right address, but I think I covered all the, the council members. Oh, first of all, Mayor Borbo, I want to congratulate you. I haven't seen you since November. So, and my first opportunity to attend a city council meeting. In any event, one thing I want to ask about is that sitting in the audience, I don't know if it's my ears or what, the sound is very muffled, so it's kind of hard to make out the low tones. But anyways, AV thing, issue. At the end of your memorial for Jose, you mentioned something ongoing, and I didn't quite catch it. Is that something that's going to be on the agenda next week?
Go ahead and finish your comments.
Okay.
I'll answer any questions.
First time I attended a city council meeting, I moved to the area, which is not quite 10 years ago, was where I live, coming out in the south of El Camino Real, traffic comes into town at outrageous speeds. And it was easy to see that anyone trying to cross the street was risking life and limb. And I kind of addressed the city council at that time, and about a pedestrian crosswalk. I know there's one at Bordeaux. And the feedback I got was that, oh, it's not that effective. It can cause more accidents than not. But it usually takes an event like this to, I think, kind of spur things on. My understanding is that the city, the new city plan will probably rezone that area, south part of town for commercial resident, or for, excuse me, for housing, which means more traffic and more people. I, unless we have really strict speed enforcement in that area, my take is the only way that's going to prevent another accident like that is putting in a stoplight at Vial Camino. And I know there's a lot of people in the area that are used to using, getting fast access. I know there's been some pushback on this whole traffic calming downtown. City of Atascadero is getting bigger, and it's just, there's more increased possibility for that happening. So my, I guess my, my question is, maybe to be taken up at a later date, what is the city planning on doing about this? And is this kind of one of those watershed events? You know, I, just after the memorial went off, went up, I think on that Sunday afterwards, saw a couple about 11-year-old girls running across that street. I'm going, you know, someone drives in a big truck SUV and they don't see them. That would have been some more statistics here. Sorry. I think people have to get used to the fact that, you know, you've got to slow down and appreciate life. And I think it's an event like this that really strikes at home. So I think, just to close, my suggestion was, and a neighbor told me at one point, you'd have a motorcycle officer with a speed gun sitting in the parking lot at the Danish home. And I imagine those tickets are not cheap if someone's doing 60 in a 40 mile an hour zone. So that would be like a immediate suggestion, and then take a hard look at a traffic light down at Vial Camino. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. In, in, well, I'm going to wait till, we normally wait to answer questions till after every member of the public speaks. So next speaker, please. And I don't see the clock here. I think Mr. Snyder was pretty much right on at three minutes, but I don't see a clock here for me to track. Is that?
Good evening, Council Jeff Osland. About 20 years ago, we put in center medians down El Camino Real. A few of us in this room remember the city outcry about pulling them out, and we spent a lot of money to pull them out. I have three concerns with the project on ECR, and I'm going to go through them really quick. At 101 northbound at ECR, at Rosario, we have now put a little pop out in so you can make a right, right turn onto the highways a little bit more difficult. I don't understand why we did that. Secondly, ECR going northbound at Rosario, we just put a pop out in the middle of that area. In my opinion, if we're going to put that pop out in, it should have been at least two feet closer to the curb and not right at El Camino. Two lanes of traffic there with a bus, for instance, the bus cannot make it there without hitting the curb. I experienced that this morning. That's why it's on my agenda. I think we need to look at maybe moving that in a couple of feet. And the one that I've been complaining about the entire time, I get to win on this one now, ECR at Trafficway in front of Whiskey and Junes. That pop out is ridiculous, needs to be removed, not finished, because we're going to spend taxpayer money taking it out later. I've had people say, we know it's a problem from our city staff. We know we're probably going to have to take it out. I've heard, well, it's there because of a bike lane. Well, if you drive by, we've seen that somebody has hit it and already broke the curb out, which is great because it proves the point. It's too narrow. And we really need three lanes there, one going eastbound, one going westbound, and one going southbound. So my point is, it's on record now that when we pull this out after it's finished in a year, because of pedestrian traffic and nobody able to get on the highway, it's a problem. And the, the final point to this is, I saw the other day, a code three with the police department, and they had to run across ECR through the parking lot, if you will, and come out at Trafficway behind Whiskey and Junes because traffic is a nightmare there. So let's have the fortitude to deal with this sooner than later. On the positive note, we now have stoplights going in, in front of Marv Station. Congratulations, everybody. That is the best thing that the city has done in years. I might not have to see another child get hit by a vehicle. So I think that's fantastic. The only question I would have there is I'm hoping that all the stoplights are going to be timed so we don't backtrack any further going all the way back across Trafficway. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want you to make public comment during Community Forum? Okay, seeing no one, we'll address a couple of things regarding my comments about having something further regarding Jose on April 8th. It may not be April 8th, but we, we were going, we kind of intend at this point to have a brief event, I guess you call it, with the family. Of course, we need to coordinate that with the family here. And we're kind of working on that. But just wanted to convey it in the sense that the comments this evening and the moment of silence were not the, the last that we will have to address that. In regards to the specific comments and suggestions regarding traffic, I could turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. DeBarr, or the Chief of Police. But I would say, obviously, the city is always constantly looking at traffic safety measures. And some special reaction to an incident like this are, you know, people ask, would seem to be, you know, sensible questions, but our traffic engineer types, you know, do point out sometimes that a crosswalk can sometimes be more dangerous than not having a crosswalk in, in a heavily trafficked area. Because people, the psychology is people start to think that that line of paint is going to protect them, and it doesn't. And so I don't want, I don't know if you have anything, I don't think you have any detail to add. So I don't know if you'd like to comment beyond the fact that you, both the police and the public works are continually looking at, at, at traffic safety issues and, you know, constantly trying to refine and provide the most safe things possible. And of course, in this particular instance, none of those measures would have protected a child on the sidewalk from an intoxicated, you know, a driver under the influence. So anything you feel compelled to add? Otherwise, I think we'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing really further. I think, you know, just to add to that, we are looking into the potential of getting a grant that would allow us to focus on traffic safety through the Office of Traffic Safety. So if that were to come to fruition, we'd be able to focus more efforts and things like that. As you mentioned, there are calming, traffic calming measures that can be taken. So, so certainly, you know, this is something that is on the minds of everyone. And we are definitely trying to figure out the best methods that we can use to help take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. And yeah, I think, I mean, obviously, increased enforcement can't be everywhere all at once, but any ability to increase enforcement is a positive thing. And regarding Mr. Osland's comments regarding certain aspects of the downtown improvement project, you know, a project like this, I'm sure that over time, something probably will have to change, you know, because nothing, nothing in planning is perfect. And so I don't know if, I don't want to get into a detailed discussion of it this evening, but Mr. DeBarr, do you have anything to add regarding how we will review the progress and how, you know, the reality of a completed project fits with, with the plan? And if anything were to need to be changed, how you would approach that?
Sure. And I, thank you, Mayor. To address Mr. Osland's concerns, I, I think, I would just say, you know, right now it's under construction. It's not complete, and it's in a state of flux or a purgatory state, I guess, for lack of a better term. And, you know, I think once the final product is there, like it'll, it'll maybe be more, you know, explicit on what lanes are going where. Because right now, like we have, you know, portions of the center median that have, they're ground down, they're painted, they've got barricades up. I mean, right now it's just a construction zone. So I think I would encourage them to be patient and maybe see what that looks like afterwards and how it works. And we'll certainly be monitoring traffic flow and safety in the downtown. If there's some adjustments that need to be made that are cause prohibitive, we'll, we'll be certainly looking at those things.
All right, thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
One of the first speaker, I don't know, I can't remember what his name is. Sir, you mentioned about the sound in here being kind of muffled. Yeah, well, all of our AV equipment is currently in the midst of being replaced. So these speakers that you see here, once we get through that, that one will be here. Even us up here have a hard time hearing. We've got speakers that are facing us and now, so it is, yeah, it's in a really bad state right now. But it's all going to be state of the art. It's going to be outstanding coming up here shortly.
All right, thank you. We will move on to our next item, which is a management report, B1, General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report from 2024. And I will turn this over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. We like to deliver these every year as a snapshot as to what activities are happening in community development. But it's also a requirement by the state of California. They do require us to report out to them on the number of housing units that are produced in our community. And we have to give them especially our affordable housing numbers. And it's all part of what we get as, as part of what we call our RENA, which is our regional housing needs allocation. Each, each community in our county is given a certain quota of what they're expected to develop in their community over an eight-year period. So I'm going to go through some of those numbers and just tell you some of the basics about what's been going on in community development, and also what we expect to keep happening in community development. So this is our our nice little progress report. I'm also joined tonight here by Sam Mountain, our Assistant Planner. And he's got some of the data in his in his brain. In case I miss one of the numbers, he can fill in a patch for us there, too. So this chart is really kind of the basics of what we submit to the state. At the very top is our actual RENA numbers in black. We're expected to develop two hundred and seven of the very low, which are really hard to get unless they're deed restricted. We're expected to get one hundred and thirty-one in the low income category, one hundred and fifty-one in the moderate income category, and three hundred and fifty-four in the standard unregulated or market rate category, for a total of eight hundred and forty-three units. Now, this time, they let us do a carryover of units from 2019 to 2020. And we actually had quite a few that carried over. So those get deducted off our total requirement. In general, we're doing great, especially when we compare ourselves to other communities in the county. We are only have a remaining balance of three hundred and seven units overall out of the eight hundred and forty-three. So we're, we're building more than a hundred units every year in the city of Atascadero. And we've gotten really good at, we've almost got all of our moderate, and we've almost got all of our low income units. Now, a big boost to that is the fact that our accessory dwelling units, our ADUs, count towards a lot of those units. Without that, we would be hard pressed to do that, because a lot of the low and moderate, they either fall into an affordable by design category, or they're actually deed restricted. And we don't love deed restricted units. We love it when they're just affordable because of how they're designed. And that's kind of how ADUs are. They let us count half of the ADUs in the community in the low section and half is moderate. So a big chunk of those are in that, in that category. So total built in this cycle is four hundred and twenty-two units over a four-year period. But with the credit of one fourteen, it gives us a pretty good number. We've only got three hundred and seven left to build total out of the eight forty-three. So housing is booming along, doing great, I think. And I think that we'll complete at the end of our cycle is in, what is it? We have eight years. So we've got like three, three years left after 2025, 2028. So we've got more time, and we're doing good. Just got to see what happens with interest rates and how development keeps moving. And what we're doing with the general plan is probably going to create more capacity as well. But just in general, we also like to report out to you generally what's happening in our, in our department. We're still seeing permit numbers in 2024 anyway, that are above average. And when I say average is when we look at a ten-year period. We also have a lot of complex projects. And I'm going to kind of just touch base on some of those tonight. But as I mentioned before, we're on track to complete all of those categories. Oh, that's ideal that Sam and I are in the picture on the, on the bottom right, since we're both here tonight. So I don't think I planned that one. It just happened. So I'm just going to go through some of the projects that are under construction. And these aren't only housing projects. They're a little bit of everything. But on the commercial land, you've all seen the very unusual design of the pit stop fuel station just north of Del Rio, next to the Hilton Home Suites. That's a fuel station. That's what that is. Right across the street from that is the Del Rio Marketplace. You've seen the Valley Fresh store, which is about to open. I imagine they're going to be stocking that store in a couple of weeks. And we'll have another option in our community, which is fantastic. But that is, that same shopping center is actually poised to contain up to ninety-two apartment units, a lot of additional commercial space. There's supposed to be some office space in there, some light industrial space in there, along with the residential land, of course, is anchor of the grocery store. So a very unique shopping center, really looking forward to that finishing out. Those are under construction. But on the horizon, we have a lot of mixed use. Everything's coming in mixed use, which is really interesting. A lot of it's vertical. In other words, it's residential built over the top of commercial. We've got one on Moro Road. We've got one on El Camino. We have one in the downtown that's going to mimic a historical movie theater. Wasn't it a movie theater? No, it was La Moda. Yeah, it was a theater. La Moda, which was just north of Traffic Way. That's going to have mixed use units. And of course, our own Centennial Plaza, our city property that we're selling for the development that was approved on the bottom left, a really neat mixed use project. We've also got Barrel Creek. You've all heard about Barrel Creek. We actually do have construction permits in-house right now for the site improvements, onsite and offsite improvements. That means the roads and the drainage and the grading. Don't have the buildings in yet, but it's moving forward. That'll have up to sixty units, about fifty-three thousand five hundred square foot of commercial space. It is also anchored by a hotel. Fantastic project. Could be really interesting. Way south end of the city, the five-acre property known as Dove Creek, that's in the Dove Creek Residential Neighborhood, finally developing with a mixed use project. There's a large commercial tenant there. There's about seventy-one new condominium units, a hotel. We have construction permits in for all of that. That is moving forward. It's finally going to be a nice place for people to go on the south end of town to walk to from that neighborhood. So really, really nice. Other things that are happening, and these are a lot of the housing projects that we're seeing. And if all of these develop, we'll exceed our RENA numbers. And a lot of these projects have the very low. Del Rio Ridge, that's being proposed by People's Self-Help Housing on the northern, northern end of town, forty-one extremely low, very low and low income units. Emerald Ridge, that's the beautiful project there on El Camino Real, kind of in the north end of town, that they built one phase of a couple of years ago. Well, they finally have come in for phases two and three, seventy-two additional units. Those are higher-end units. They don't fit the low and moderate categories, but really nice units that fill a need, seventy-two of them. Cal Manor Two, that project's just about done. They're putting the final touches on that one, seventy-five low and moderate income units. We actually counted for that in the 2023 RENA, because we issued permits for it a couple of years ago. But it's almost complete. It'll be complete this year, if not this month. And that one, you probably haven't seen it, because it's on the backside of the former California Manor. So you can't see it from the street. But if you drive back there, you'll see it's a nicely designed multifamily apartment house project. Another one was Empire Inn. That's kind of on a little hill just off of Traffic Way and Ardea, just alongside the 101. That used to be, actually, the Empire used to be an old motel in Atascadero many years ago. It's a neat little project that became residential. And now they're going to do a second story on it and do some lower income units. And so hopefully, that comes along. And then Paseo Paloma, another one that's sponsored by People's Self-Help Housing. That's the one on the state hospital property. So both Paseo Paloma and Del Rio Ridge, they're kind of, they're approved, they're waiting in the wings for grant funding, as a lot of these projects are for affordable housing. But if all these move forward, huge numbers in the housing market, huge numbers to meet all of our quotas for affordable housing, and support our workforce in our community, which is, which is fantastic. See, what else we got going on? More commercial. I missed Del Rio Ranch. That one's exciting. That one you've seen recently here at the City Council. I see that as really, a really good tourism spot, nine acres of event, retail restaurant space, really anchored by the glamping spaces. And glamping, when we say glamping, that means RV sites, either RVs that are fixed onsite, really nice, high-end, yurt kind of spaces, and then spaces where people can pull in RVs, and then some short-term actual built rental units. Some fantastic property for that, because it's just the hillside and the way it's got the views and the way it'll be kind of integrated into a commercial environment. So really neat spot. And then the edge, that was approved as well. But now that's going to be modified into a mixed use project. They want to put some residential above that. So that's going to come around. But that's on a vacant property just south of what was the former factory outlet. So another new project. So and just to touch on to all the policy things we've been doing in 2024, you saw a lot of these things. We always like to just remind you, we, we did the ADU ordinance update, the objective design standards, some of the permit streamlining standards. We actually approved entitlements for up to one hundred and thirty-eight residential units last year. And of course, the new general plan and zoning, and that's coming along good. We're going to give you another update on that soon. And we're going to be doing some public outreach on that soon. And the big piece of that that's happening is we're actually writing policy. We're actually getting the land use element done, the circulation element done, the infrastructure element. I know Nick and his team are working on that right now. And so we'll be talking to him about it as well. And so that's fantastic. And then in 2024, believe it or not, we issued one thousand eight hundred and fifty construction permits. Now, those just might be water heaters and windows and little things, but it's a lot. It's a lot that we've, we've processed. And out of those was the one hundred and eighteen new residential permits. But I wanted to wrap it up and make it brief. And I'm here to answer your questions, and so is Sam. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dunsmore. I'm going to start on my left. Councilmember Piki, you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to like some clarification. There goes that AV system right there. Someone's microphone on. There you go. So fifty-fifty, in terms of what you can claim ADU as low or moderate, right? If it's an ADU, there's no regulation on what someone charges for rent for those. So it's almost just like the state saying, since you're building these small cottages on your property, the city can claim those as low income or moderate. But someone could be renting it for twenty-five hundred dollars for a one bedroom, if it's a nice area. It wouldn't matter how much they're charging for it. Could you just clarify that we get, we get to allocate them fifty-fifty for those two categories, but we have no, we don't regulate what someone can charge for their ADU rental?
Yes, Councilman, that's very accurate. We do not regulate that. Instead, what happens is these numbers based on low and moderate are based on a county-wide study for what these things actually are potentially renting for. And that was based on a study that was done two years ago. And they're going to want to do that study every couple of years. So it could happen at some point, if we get some really nice ADUs, we could lose that ability to count those in those categories, because these things are looked at. But generally, most of these ADUs are because of their pure size, and the fact that they're on someone else's property, are in those categories for affordability by the nature of the beast.
Thank you, Mayor Portemderis.
Thank you. Yeah, Phil, on the, you mentioned, or in the report here, there's twenty-four new ADUs that were approved over the last year. I'm curious, one of the great things that we got involved with, I don't know if we initiated here, but the stock plans. And I'm curious if you know, of the twenty-four that were approved, how many of those were from the stock plans?
Yes, there was a few of those. I think four or five we had go out for stock plans. Three or four of them may actually have already been built. So not a whole lot, but there's a few that are generated. So that was a great activity that we did. Other communities are doing that, too. And there's a few being taken. I wish it was more popular. Have to advertise those things.
I've actually got one of the works going to be coming to the city with, for a permit one.
Wonderful.
Yeah. So I think it's a great thing. It certainly keeps the cost down for the homeowners.
Absolutely.
I think it's, it's, I mean, it takes money out of the architect's pocket, but, but I think, I think it's a great thing. And I'm glad that you guys did it. And I hope it catches on very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Architect. Okay, Councilmember Funk.
Thank you. So we've done a number of things to make it easier for people to build housing and build housing that young people and young families could afford in this community. In, we also have, have been supportive of those, the People's Self-Help Housing projects. I didn't see on your list the action of the council that extended the, the extended fee waiver for those projects. But that is, we did do a fee waiver to help financially support those low and very low income units, right?
I believe we did. I'm trying to remember what we actually did and what I would call it instead of a fee waiver.
Yeah, waivers, I think waivers, yeah, is, it's a deferral rather than a waiver.
That's the word I'm looking for.
It's a seventeen-year deferral.
Yes, there was a deferral potential options they could, they could apply for. And it basically becomes a very low interest loan where they can defer their development impact fees.
Yeah. I was at a housing summit recently for the Slow County, and along with Planner, Senior Planner Kelly Geeson. And one of the comments there is that, that getting these these projects that are financed through low income tax credits for the extremely low income and very low income persons is like getting your kid into Harvard. It's really, really competitive to get that money. Is there anything on our list in the housing element of steps that we're doing to support those projects for the least advantaged among us that we haven't started doing or done as a council?
There are things in our housing element, such as providing an affordable housing program, which could help directly finance these things. We haven't done that yet. Right now, we have an interim affordable housing program. But I think our council in the past has decided not to do that. That is a thing in our, that's one of the things, one of the mechanisms in our housing element, which would mean, though, collecting fees on other market rate development in order to help finance or pay down the fees on these other affordable units, or require these other, you know, units to be built. Instead, we've, we've required other mechanisms. But there is a significant other list in our housing element that I'm happy to go over that with you individually as council members or report back later on that. Because I know there's a lot of things that, a lot of tools and a lot of potential programs that we could implement. I don't have, I'm not prepared to talk about all of those tonight.
But I think it's worth people knowing that we're not slacking around here. We are moving forward steadily to try to make it possible for people to build these projects in our community that contribute opportunities for young people and families in our community. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Newsom, any questions? All right, thank you. I was curious, and Councilmember Funk started to address it. You know, some of these projects that People's Self-Help does, and one of the big drivers there is those tax credits. Those are federal tax credits, correct?
Yes.
I mean, it's not a state program.
That's not a state program.
And so if there potentially were changes on the part of the federal government, that could impact those.
Certainly.
The availability of those. Okay, because that could be an issue. Okay. And I think to clarify for the public, the very, the low and very low, because those are hard to get and are usually, there's some form of subsidy there, usually the tax credits that allow people self-help to build those things.
Yes.
Our job is, we have to ensure that there's a proper zoning where these kinds of things can be built, et cetera. I mean, it's not the city's task to obviously build them.
No.
Or any of this housing, but simply to facilitate the construction of these units.
Correct.
Correct. Because obviously, the state is pushing cities to build more housing. But our primary responsibility is to ensure that that is available for properly zoned land, et cetera, for builders to build on.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's see if we have any members of the public which would like to comment on this item. Okay, see no one approaching the podium. We'll bring it back to the council. I am curious, Clerk, though, this is a report, and the agenda says to receive and accept. And because we're submitting to the state, do we need the council to essentially ratify and say, yes, submit it? Or is this just simply receive and file from our perspective? So no motion is necessary?
No motion is necessary.
Okay, thank you. All righty, with that, then, we will proceed to our next item. It was our only business item. We will proceed to council announcements and committee reports. And I will start on my right with Councilmember News.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Funk.
Yes, I attended a half-day session with the Homeless Services Oversight Council. This was the major planning session where we looked at the funding of homeless services throughout the county, and affordable housing projects. A lot of progress has been made towards building out some of the housing that was called for in the homeless, 2022 to 27 countywide strategic plan on homelessness. We, the, right now, the key, a key thing for the council to be aware of is that fifty-seven percent of the money for these projects, so the ones that go through HSOC, are coming from one-time sources, including the biggest of those is the HHAP from the state. You heard, you, it's heard of HAP, HAP five, HAP six, these HAP numbers. We do have a couple of years of grants that are in process on HAP. So there won't be an immediate cliff if that is not funded this year. But the League of California Cities is pushing to have the state continue to fund the operation so that the work that has been done to build out new shelters and new supportive housing can continue to be operated, because the needs continue in our community. can continue to be operated because the needs continue in our community. So that there was a lot of prior discussion and prioritization, and that will be digested further. General consensus of folks that we need to really focus our priorities on operating what we've got and not building a lot of new stuff. But that new things that have, can support their operations or that are being privately funded from other sources certainly can go forward. And I had, because I was there, I had to miss the, a routine meeting of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency that was at the same time. And Mr. DeBarre represented our interests in that meeting, which was to approve the annual water report. Is there anything startling we need to add to that? Okay, Nick says no. That'll leave.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Portemderis.
All right. Thank you. Last week, Capsule Board met several, several items. One, one item was a couple of representatives went to Washington and met with Congressman Carver Hall and Panetta and Adam Schiff's, Senator Schiff's staff, you know, to let them know how we're doing and advocate for some funding, I'm sure. But one of the, I guess, important things out of it that happened at some point was continuing a resolution was signed by President Trump that ensures that the funding will be stable through September 30 of 2025 for Capsule. So that's good for that. We've also submitted a proposal to the California Wellness Foundation for the Center of Health and Profession for a total of $150,000 over two years. Let's see there. Yeah. So, and so anyway, so that'll be two years' funding for that. Also, that's the Energy Division of the Home Rehabilitation Program proposal to the City of Bulton CBD funds of $75,000. So the goal is to provide rehabilitation and accessibility improvements up to 20 low-income housings, households in the City of Bulton for 12-month periods. So if they get the funding for that, they'll be able to work on those things. And then the last thing was to, let's see, to, for the National Council on Aging. Let's see, to submit a proposal for the Energy Division in the amount of $290,000. The opportunity would enable the energy to provide the complete level of service, followed by, followed by the home modification, that fall prevention, oh, the prevention of fall, fall prevention. So it's for the, people stop falling. Making their house is more, more safe for the elderly. So anyway, hopefully getting $290,000 to be able to work on, on stuff like that to keep people safe. So anyway, that's what, that's all I got for that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Peak.
No committees since our last meeting. Looking forward to Water Resource Advisory Committee next Wednesday. And that's all for now.
Okay, thank you. I attended last Friday, somebody else on. I attended a mayor's meeting last Friday and part of the agenda is we had our chief, Fire Chief Casey Bryson and Chief Jonathan Stornetta from Pass Robles there. One of the things they spoke about, and council is aware of this, that last week or maybe 10 days ago now, or so, the, the state released the new fire hazard severity zone maps. And they nicely passed out a nice color one that is easier, because I know council saw it in an email format. It's, it's nice to see in, in color and a hard copy. But of course, it's not nice to see because there's a lot of Atascadero is red, meaning it's in the high, very high fire severity zone. And in fact, I would note, it's a pass, I actually somehow ended up with a copy of Passos, no red. Like I think the only other city that had red was San Luis Obispo. And so, and obviously a huge chunk of our city is red and a bunch is orange. And very little of ours is not very high, high or moderate. So we are somewhat unique in that situation in, amongst the cities in our, in our county. But this is something, of course, the state has done. They're accepting comments, but no input regarding any, they will not accept any changes. And so this is something we're monitoring carefully. And our chief and Chief Stornetta did a great job of presenting this information. Also, I attended, along with Councilmember Funk, a community neighborhood meeting put on by Echo that was done at the city's behest as a result of a meeting we had in November, I think, regarding Echo, you know, expanding their facility, but also considering expansion of, of some of their other services. And this was a meeting we insisted that they have. And there was, I don't know, about 20, 25 members of the community there providing input. And that will be important as we consider things going down the road. So I attended that. I also attended my first board meeting of the Central Coast Community Energy. And it was a fairly long meeting, followed by ribbon cutting at their new San Luis Obispo office. And I won't go into details, but say, say, as usual, I asked a hell of a lot of questions, so. And I think that's all I have. Are there any individual determinations or actions on any member of the council? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.